For the February North Bend Order of Education at 7:00 PM. Justin?
Here.
Francis?
Here.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Myself, here. I'll ask you all to please rise for the pleasure of meeting.
Pleasure to meet you, students, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
We have no absent or no rouge. The posted open meeting act is behind us on the wall here. It was in Miller Ben Eagle as well as at the post office.
Let me post office.
Okay. So we've met those requirements. A review of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Agenda is approved as is. And we'll start off with Mrs. Dorsey and members of our kindergarten class with demonstrating B-bots and their use of money-based concepts. And thank you for coming.
Sure. So I was asked by the ESU this last summer to be a part of a group, like a focus group, on coding, robotics, different things. They got a grant, not sure from where, but they received a grant to buy themselves a whole inventory of robots for all different ages. And they asked a bunch of us teachers to come and learn about all of them so we'd go back to our districts and teach everybody about them. So after that meeting, I asked them how I can get my hands on some robots. And she said, well, you can check them out for two weeks at a time. And I was like, no, I need to like keep. So she said part of the grant was to provide robots to teachers who were going to use them and spread the word about robotics and the importance of coding. So I just, on an education website, they had an article about the importance of teaching coding to kids because on the back in the red, it says, in 2016, 20% of jobs required basic coding skills, and today, more than 58% of jobs require coding skills. So the ESU gave me a pack of six B-bots, which looks like this. And we use them a lot, don't we?
Yeah.
So this teaches the kids the beginning coding skills, and then as they get older, the robots get harder. So in my class, we have several different mats. This one on the floor, we chose farming, since most of you are farmers. So they will program, I'll ask them to program the B-bot to different places on this mat. And each mat, I have the mats over here, I can show you in just a minute, but each mat comes with a pack like this. And it has costumes for B-bot. So here's Combine costume that we can put on B-bot. Do you guys want to pick one? And then it comes with the animals that they can deliver to the different parts of the farm. So this is by far one of their favorites. So who wants to go first? By the way, this is Noah, and this is Nash. These are a couple making their own runs. Nigel, hi. Do you want one of those, or should we put them away? Oh.
You gotta hold the green cup.
Put Combine on him? No? Okay. All right. So Nash, why don't you go first? And I want you to deliver the chicken on the mat. Why don't you press X just to make sure he's cleared out? Okay. So right now, we're working on, like, they move him as they push the buttons to keep track, but eventually, we'll move away from that, moving it as they push the buttons and try to just do it all in one smooth process. There he is. He delivered the chicks. All right. Nova, how about you? You deliver the horse to the horse pen. Okay? So my kids have so much fun with this. I had two that asked Santa Claus for them, and they got them for Christmas. All right. Did you get them delivered? Okay, Nash, do you want, we'll show them one more. Do you want to go to? Let's take the tractor, or let's take the wagon to the tractor in the field. Do you remember if you started?
Yep.
Good job. All right. Nova's going to do a pig, and then we'll be done. And I'll show you these other mats while she's programming that. So once we learned the basics of how to get B-bot around, there's these other mats too, I guess. Let's see what this one is. This is like a construction site. This one is jobs, community helpers. And then this one is just places in your town. And then we also do a mat for sight words. So I'll tell them to program B-bot to go to a sight word. We have a number mat that they program him to go to different numbers. And once we get into addition, I'll have them do addition problems, like program him to go to 1 plus 2 equals 3. And this one's kind of a mixture of letters and sight words on one side. And then we have shapes on the back. So these are all the things that we do with B-bot. Kind of cross-curricular, just practicing coding and teaching them like the early skills that they need.
Nice work, guys.
Yeah, great job.
Any questions for me?
So by the end of the year, they're doing the math?
Addition problems? Hopefully. Yes, 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 they do addition problems. But we haven't done programming for addition problems, so hopefully, we'll get there.
Teacher question, and how do you utilize this? Do you have kids waiting?
I have six B-bots.
I don't have it. Kids are in your classroom.
I have 18. So groups of three.
So do you have one group working on this while the others are doing other stuff?
That's my goal. But right now, they're not, not all of them are completely independent with the B-bots, because I just got them right before Thanksgiving. So I haven't had gobs of time. But eventually, I would like my independent reading group, like, so I have six kids in each reading group, and I have one reading group that's independent. So one works with Miss Amy, my parent, one group works with me, and then my independent group. My goal is my independent group will work on their letters and sight words with each other by, like, telling each other to program B-bot to go to different sight words and letters and sounds, and even maybe on the alphabet mats, L-CVC words.
School board member question.
Yeah.
Would it be better if you had one for each kid?
A B-bot?
Yes. Is that overkill?
That's, I think that would be, ideally, I would like one per pair, so that they can check each other. You know, so like, if I tell them to program B-bot to go to F, and they're independently working, I might not get around to everybody to check and make sure they got the B-bot to F. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So it would be like a checks and balances would be what I would.
Well.
Like that.
Collaborative learning is probably more powerful anyhow.
Right.
Cost?
A lot.
Well, that's relative though, too.
Yeah. So this set of six B-bots is, I think, $960 for the six. But then the mats, Ms. Rigan and Tessie approved for me to buy these mats. The company makes these so that B-bot can go, and then he goes in like quadrants, so they're set up perfectly, where if I made him, it might not be exactly perfect. So anyway, these were $250 for three mats. And then they come with the cards, like these cards.
So your total, about $1,500, $2,000, some $750?
Yeah. And then like if a classroom were to get these, like, I got these through the ESU, and there's a box like this for every one of these smaller mats. That's another cost. But.
The other kindergarten class doesn't have them.
They don't. No. So she can use them whenever she wants, obviously. I share. But yeah, Becky and I, so in that focus group, it was Becky Streff, myself, Roy Wright, and Aubrey Miller. And Becky and I both reached out to the ESU immediately, and they, we both got robots for our classrooms, so.
So what are Becky's likes for that? Do they really work?
They have to build theirs.
They're very complex.
Yes, very complex. To be honest, it took us a little bit, like the teachers, a little bit at the ESU to figure out how to build them, because they don't really give you directions. It's just, here you go, here's your battery pack, figure out how to wire this robot so that the battery works. So, yeah, it gets pretty intense.
So what do you guys think of this? Do you like them?
Do you like the B-bots?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anytime I have them out, or like when I plug them in, they're like, their eyes turn green, they're like, oh, we're going to do B-bots! So. And my, my kindergartner is in the other classroom, and she is horribly jealous. So anyway, any other questions for us? We'll get out of your hair. Yeah. Thanks for letting us come in.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, the crowd.
Good job, man.
Good job, kids.
Yes.
Look around the room.
Joey, my boy.
Just to stay.
My boy's a junior at the university and is taking coding.
Yeah.
I didn't really know what it is, but now I know, and maybe if he has problems, he could.
Yeah, or Santa. Santa delivers B-bots. I hear. Yeah. Well, thanks for letting us come in.
Thank you so much. You guys too, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
You can go back this way.
Yep, you can go back.
Thanks for bringing your mom and dad to your mansion.
No, she, I brought her.
So do you have any public comment next to this? First is approval of prior minutes. I didn't see anything that needs to be corrected. You guys? Motion by Nick to approve minutes. Second.
Second.
By Justin. Justin?
Yes.
Francis? Francis?
Yes.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Review of the financial statements.
Yeah. This, the balances for each of our funds, they're improving balance without public board. I said, history is one of those. Some treasures report, three months. The big one in here is review some, excuse me, expenditure summaries. I thought about those the last couple months, and I'm just having comparison. That's where we were this year. And so if you look at both of those reports, there are some summary, obviously, these revenue have just been completed this school year. Scan percentage-wise, we're always questioning. And you could look at overall, or expenditure, or excuse me, or revenue, 41.78%. And the percentage of the year completed is 41.66, so we're really close to that. And then on the expenditure summary, the 50% of the school year completed, and our overall total debt is 49.65%.
Any questions?
Anything unusual, Steve?
Nope. Nope, nothing. For this year, it'll get interesting to bring that out, let's say, your annual dollar for extra following years.
What is on that, uh, transfer?
That would be like the transfers we have to lunch fund, or goodies, or appreciation. And so.
I mean, obviously, things have always been down.
We're a little, we're a little ahead of our lunch fund, where we.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. I think it's lunch, probably mostly that's adding, increasing that percentage a little bit more than what we're at this year.
It's probably similar to what we kind of do last year, too. As far as transferring.
Yeah, we might be a little bit ahead of where we were last year, I'm not sure.
Yeah. We had to transfer a little more money this year.
There was a time there where we weren't, we didn't get our money from state. And I'm not sure why, because of those payments for, for your lunch, that sort of thing, so.
That's what I was going to add.
I think we're caught up now to where we're supposed to be.
Do they deposit state aid every month, or does it take quarter, or every month?
What about Booster Club? Or is that going to show up when we start getting reimbursed from the Booster Club for the scoreboard?
Well, some should go back into, until the scoreboards are paid off.
Yes.
You know, Bill, you're reimbursing, I think that came out of Special Building, was it? And so.
Will that show up in these reports?
It would show up on the bank balance report.
Okay.
The red lines. The top category there. It probably is one to keep called out, I guess. Just where we are.
Yeah.
Getting that. How we're progressing. As I understand it, once that's paid off, I think then it will. I guess I'm not sure, I'll look back and see what we talked about there.
I think then it just reverts to them, doesn't it? It's their fund. They were the ones that did this.
They keep.
Still a solicitation after it's paid off. I mean, we have.
Funding projects.
Yeah.
I think they were, you know, some of your commitments. After the board, then they got to go back and renew the commitment.
The sponsors, yeah.
Wasn't it five years?
It's five years.
Five years.
Yeah, depending on what level they have, it's five years for a contracted rate.
Any other questions on those reports? Then we'll go to the activity fund. Invoices paid by wrong account. They moved it around to make it right. Fruit sale money's coming in. Concession stand money's been coming in from home bands. The foundation money, scholarships paid out to the 2023 graduates. I didn't really see anything on there. Those two by Poppin. Only one is Alex Lake, but I think they've, Alex Lake Scholarship, I think they refunded that last year, so I don't know if somebody's got to call them and see if they're refunded again, or is it just done?
I don't know why, we can look into that, I'm not for sure.
Okay. Motion to approve the bills, or wait, yeah. Or do you want to look at checklist being reported first?
It's going to be motion here. What, motion to approve?
What do they have?
Like, of a gallon?
Is that all the order? Yeah, I'm trying.
So 160 bucks referees, both games?
A night?
Yeah. I'm just curious. Great.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll, it's a, a boy-girl game, or if it's a JV varsity, they'll do both games. Yeah.
It seems like Ballmer for 75, so he'll do the first.
That's just the JV game. So that's just a single game.
Right. And then the double is 76.
Varsity will get the two. You have to have, you have to be certified to be able to do that varsity.
Well, we pay these other schools 175 bucks, 100 bucks, 140 bucks.
For?
I don't know. That's what I want. There's, like, to Oakland, to Ashland.
I think that could be for, like, wrestling entry fees, speech entry fees. We've paid a lot of speech entry fees, so. It's normally like, not basketball games, we normally don't, but wrestling and speech track meets will pay an entry fee. Cross-country, we pay an entry fee.
Same as Lady United State.
Right. Yep.
All right. Motion to pass bills. No more questions?
Someone?
Francis, second. I'll second. Andy? Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy? Doug? Yes. Justin? All right. Motion to pass bills carries. And then go to reports, superintendent reports. Go ahead, Bob.
Kirsten, there's 12 to, and this is, sorry, this is teacher grading term paperized. There's two women in leadership or something, and you get Tessie, Tessie's name down twice. One should be prenda, I think. On 12, on the bill, like 212, I think.
Well, they're all 212, because we've held those today.
Yeah, but there's Tessie's names on there twice, and Frank's name's not there at all. Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, women in leadership, or. It's a, it's a, it's a, we need women, women in leadership.
ESU?
Yeah, ESU. And you've got Tessie's name down twice.
Oh, it's way down.
It's about, I don't know, halfway down that first page. It's two-thirds of the way down the first page. And it's a, yeah, sorry.
So we'll make that correction. So what do you think?
We'll just make that correction.
About that way.
Superintendent report.
All right. Just a number of things here, just go over it quickly. Bob and Doug add down production spring conference at Carney, 14th and 15th. If anyone else, is there anyone else who's thinking they can go? Anyone else that is not able to? I, I probably can. We have rooms and everything already to go, so I just didn't know what to cancel. And then I'll get you. Okay. Uh, let's see. Gabby, John, Wimmy and I have been working, mostly Gabby, on a solution for digital record board. It needed more space. Tiger Arena, we have right in the middle right now, the two trophy cases we have are touchscreen digital record board. And what we'd like to do is move that, so we can have another spot for more trophies, another trophy case there. And then move that to the east hall, the arena, east wall, the arena contents. And then upgrade the software and possibly, I'd like to also do the touchscreen itself, because I think that's almost 10 years old. What I understand, what I assume is racially built. But the, there's a cost to it, an annual cost for the software to run that. But the way I understand it right now is if you were to change a record, it takes hours because of just the coding. It might not look great if you don't get the coding just right. And this, essentially now, we're making just like a webpage, where you just put graphics in, put pictures in, put that, you know, type information in, and it'll look a lot better, and be a lot easier to save a lot of time, so.
Do, do we have a policy for taking care of, like, trophies and stuff? Like, how long, I mean, how long is it? How long is a trophy per? Yeah, I know, there, there's a hole dug in out here someplace where there's a bunch of trophies buried, because we didn't know what to do with them back in the day. That may be something we need to take a look at, to go, after 10 years, is it still viable? I mean, like, obviously, state championships would be one thing, maybe district championships, but, you know, when you're 306 or 7 trophies a, a year, I mean, it sort of disappoints, you know, what's, what's the big deal?
Right.
So, and maybe that could be a coaches committee or something, too. I know there was a, a point in time where some coaches won of the trophies that they had earned.
Right.
You know, and just if we had a way of, okay, these are, these are approaching the 10-year limit, then these will be decommissioned. And I'm just thinking out loud.
I remember getting some at a class reunion once, you know, but, you know, that's when they came back and said, whoever wants them.
Grab an auction. Grab an auction, or a fundraiser, or something, too.
They removed them from there.
Well, what we could do too is, with this program, is I think you catalog a lot of those, probably at least have a different representation of them.
Turn into a digital presence rather than a physical. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, too.
Yeah. So it's a lot of data, you can also put your, which we have right now, our class deposits, you know, hang, where you can put those in there, too. And then you can put it all online, too. So we'll put everything on our website through the app, and so it's, it's a, it's a neat program.
So when you say upgrading the board, is that a whole new board then?
Well, yeah, I'd like, I would prefer to get a new touchscreen. What, what it does is it, it downloads, I think, every night. It has all the information stored on it, so then you don't have to worry about, like, you know, if the internet's slow or it's down, so that it can still function. Like I said, I think the one that we have is fairly old.
And you, is that a friend, Dan, also?
I don't know. I'll have to talk to John and Gabby about that. He put it my office.
2011.
Is it just a TV?
Which one came in?
Yeah, it's just a TV. Yeah, I think that one down there is just a TV.
Oh, it is?
Oh, okay.
So it could be just a, is this a TV?
Yeah. Probably, but I'd say we're. Uh, this morning, Roy and I, we're able, Rob's out there, too. A representative from Turf Tank came, and did a little demo on the football field, great autonomous field painter. It's pretty neat. We, it, it's a, it's a neat system. And, you know, he said he could come out, I think, maybe at some point, if anybody wants, wants to watch and do some more, but I was just curious, I'd spoken to another administrator that used it back out west, and it obviously saves a ton of time, because you don't have to go hit the field with one or two or three people.
At least saves this company that's working with Skyler.
I think they do.
We've looked at that.
Yeah, I think Skyler uses that. Yep. They have a, this guy's a little piece from Ohio, I think. He came on to talk to us today, but. We just wanted to see how it worked. It was just perfectly straight lines where everything, we kind of found out in our football field, we're going to need to make some changes a little bit to it, but but you can paint it, make it look amazing, and like I said, save a lot of time, that maybe can be dedicated to other parts of the. but you can paint it, make it look amazing, and like I said, save a lot of time, that maybe can be dedicated to other parts of the grounds that need, you know, need attention, so. There is a cost to it, and I'll, I'll do that with my board communication Wednesday.
How long does it take to paint the field now?
Now, it kind of depends, that first paint, you know, we're going to go through and find all the marks and everything, and try and get it square. I would say, at a minimum, that would probably take most of a morning, maybe afternoon.
And that's with all the staff, too?
Yeah.
They're like, five, they're five people out there when they do it, so multiply the working time, so five, for the first one. After that, they just go out and sort of re, retrace, repaint what, what was painted that first time.
And besides this, obviously, you know, you can paint it the same exact way every time, you can just touch up parts of it, you don't have to do the whole thing.
Why does it take that many first? Don't you have the pens or whatever?
Moving, yeah, moving, moving lines, uh, changing numbers, they have a couple of people picking up the numbers each time, because they do the, I, I've watched.
The stencils.
Yeah, the stencils.
So, and then after that, it's usually rods out there with a spray wand, and he just refreshes what was done the first time. But set up all the numbers and moving the templates for, you know, yard, every yard line, and do the straight lines.
So I did look at it on the internet, it would do the softball field, too.
The softball, do the sectors for discus and shot put. It will do, I mean, it'll paint all your hash marks, every yard, both sides, it'll do, do a big level on the field if you wanted, if you paint, uh, North Bend, in one end zone, RBC, Tigers in the other. Yep, if you do all that, and, and paint your practice fields, obviously, too, so.
So you can paint a big tiger hide, like, like you at LSU.
Yeah, depending on the package you purchase, you can get a couple of custom graphics that they can put into it, so. And there's options to buy it outright, or to have a subscription, essentially, they said, but they have a, a light model, then they have a turf tank one, turf tank two, and then like a pro, uh, subscription. Which obviously get everything, but it costs the most. I'll keep you, if you want to go check out the field, like I said, it just, well, I had to leave building, and, but it had done the footprint of the main field this morning, so.
When, when you said that if we did this, we might have to change something on the purpose, do something on the field, like, something big, or just?
Hopefully not too big, I think we have to move more of those.
I think it's a ninety-nine yard field. They need to be painted anyhow.
Really? Didn't even mark out the hundred. All those records have come back after.
All of them have asterisks now. But, I mean, if you, you guys have been out there probably, you know, especially out in the corners here, that kind of, it's done, yeah, so. But, Roy and, he's on top of it, so we'll make it, uh, a standard field, and, um, and have to, like I said, maybe we'll have to move. All right, candidate information, uh, for elected officials in the state of Nebraska, the districts, I included a map there, where you can find our district, the school district is in. No one's filed yet to run for District Fifteen in the Nebraska State Legislature, as of, I guess, last week, haven't looked this week to see anything. If you know anyone extra interested, I think that date's coming up here.
Fifteen, right before Cummins.
But they're all.
And then March first, order everybody else.
Everybody else.
Uh, Superintendent Transparency Act states that a proposed superintendent contract has to be posted online for three days prior to approval, and then after approval, posted online for the upcoming year. And so, any negotiations take place tonight, it can't be voted into, uh, or voted on, I should say, tonight, it'll have to be done the next week, so, just so you're aware. Uh, Levi did give me the numbers for the LED light replacement project, so I'll get that information to you guys as well. The next one, um, I did approve and increase the price of lunch extras from a dollar fifty to two dollars, after having a meeting with Angela and Jamie. Uh, that was based on continued food cost increases, um, and not changing that amount at the beginning of the year. But the process I used to communicate that out, obviously failed miserably, so that's my fault, I apologize for that, and, um, for right now, the price is back to a dollar fifty, and those that were charged to will be credited with fifty cents back, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
What, what does an extra entail, I mean, what is a buck fifty issue? Is that an extra entree, or?
Well, Angela can give you the answer just for sure.
It, um, it's definitely like, today we had grilled chicken, so it was a chicken, but also, if the kids want to have rice with it, she let them have rice, too. Um, if it's chicken nuggets, it's a chicken nuggets, chicken fried steak, it is, it is the entree.
So, it's not like we used to do peanut butter and jelly sandwiches?
They can do those, too, that's another choice, or we have yogurt and cheese with, um, crackers, because we have to have a grain option with it, so. But the extra entrees, if we have the peanut butter and jelly left from lunch service, they can definitely buy this an extra for the yogurt and cheese.
Is that, uh?
We, we aren't required at all to provide any extra entrees, at all. In fact, the state really doesn't encourage it. In fact, North Bend is most definitely outside of the range of the state mandated and what the state wants you to serve. We serve more on first lunch service than the state, our entrees are larger than the state would even want us to serve.
Thank you.
So, I. Well, I mean, we're losing money regardless.
Right, yeah.
We have to subsidize that fund, which most schools do, but I don't know, we make money off of their lunch fund, lunch service.
What's, I, I can't, and that's a huge percentage, I mean, it's not like over fifty percent of the kids going back.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sharing numbers that are going back for seconds, when I've eaten down there, you know, it, it kind of depends on the day, what you're having, but, uh.
So what do you do, you just serve them until you're completely out there, if it's in high demand?
Yeah, if we have it, we serve it, I know each lunch, they, they set aside a certain amount to make sure we have enough for all.
A little extra.
Yeah, but, yeah, we'll serve it until it's gone, if, if the kids want it.
I just remembered a discussion about it years ago, was, uh, when we first started doing the PB and J, and it was, we don't want anybody to be, um, remember.
Right.
We have one of, somebody who maybe wasn't capable of spending a lot, just wanted them to have a choice.
Right.
Able to.
And maybe going forward, you know, um, just as part of the beginning of your process, you know, setting lunch prices, we could also examine the extras, what should be, if those need to change, too, so. Uh, again, that was my fault for the lack of communication, so, uh, hopefully people are okay now with getting, setting that back, uh, at a dollar fifty at this point. Uh, one last thing for me, conversations with the leadership team, we've got our meetings, and based on, uh, observations, concerns sometimes, and how they're brought to our attention. And I included a copy of it, Policy Thirty Thirty-Five, Change the Command, but I really want to focus on what the chain of command is, and maybe, you know, revisit that, maybe make a graphic or something that we can share. Social media, just so that people are aware of what's expected of them if they have a, a concern. I, I think that this would help save some people time, and save some, maybe some hard feelings, uh, if they follow that chain of command. Not to say that they can't ask for help, or, you know, sometimes people are a little apprehensive to have conversations, which is fine. But, uh, but, so I, I feel it's the best way to address an issue, you know, if you address it with the person that you have the issue with. And so, I'd like to, uh, again, put that out there, and make sure that we review that, and kind of go over it with the staff, or our extended service, too, and send it out to patrons as well, so. Really, uh, ask them to utilize that chain of command, because every, every school has one of those, but, um, you know, following it is the next step to making sure it's used properly. All right, that's all I can do. So, let's see here, high school principal.
All right. The first thing I have is the College Career and Future Fair, um, this is something that we talked to Katie Wright about, and it seems like forever ago. Uh, so she started organizing this, and we picked Valentine's Day that, that day, um, because we thought it would be a, a nice break to kind of the, the third quarter, because sometimes, especially in January, it kind of gets a little long, we didn't know that we would have a billion snow days in January, but, um, so it is set for Valentine's Day. Um, the school days will kind of wrap up, we'll do a normal, we'll have seven periods a day, but they'll all be shortened. Then we'll have a little tap time to kind of regroup, remind our kiddos what the expectations are when they go to the College Career and Future Fair. And then we'll go into the gym, and that'll start at two-thirty from grades, for grades eight through twelve. Um, grades six and seven are working on their wax museum projects, and so Mrs. Cody has said that this would be a great opportunity for them to work on their speeches and get some help from the pairs and other teachers. So, sixth and seventh grade will be working on wax museum, eight through twelve will go to the College and Career Fair. Uh, we have about twenty-five, uh, community partners and businesses, and about twenty-five or so colleges, um, that are going to come and just set up, like booths, like you would do at a college fair. In the north, or the south commons, down the hallway, into the north commons, and all throughout the old gym. Um, they'll set up, they'll be ready about two o'clock, two-thirty, kids will come in, uh, Mrs. Wright has created a goose chase, and I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with that, but it's, it's on there, they all got an app on their phone or a mobile device. We got kids that didn't have a mobile device, we got them an iPad, and they're just little things that they have to do, you know, go see the vendor that has something or something, and then they have to ask a vendor a, a, a question. If vendor gives them the answer, they put it in their goose chase app, um, and then the winners get prizes. Um, also, we know the vendors are bringing, um, giveaways, so there'll be pencils, and I, I think I heard somebody bringing Gatorades in, um, so we're really excited to see how this works. Uh, we haven't done one of these here at North Bend Central, we've taken our seniors before to Fremont High School for College and Career Fair, we've never hosted one here. Um, so we're really excited to see how it works, and, um, the more we get into this, we're really, an hour is going to go by really, really fast, especially when you have fifty participants. So, I mean, you could talk to somebody for five minutes, easily, so, um, I told our teachers, you know, help be in, in the gym, help move people about, you know, make sure our kids are moving about, because it's going to go really, really fast. Um, but we're really excited, um, and then we'll end the day, uh, with Valentine's, the FFA has always assisted in providing Valentine's for the staff and students, um, you could preorder those, so we'll, we'll do that, and then hopefully have a lovely rest of the day on Valentine's Day. So that's just a little bit about the College Career and Future Fair, um, we would love for you to come join us, so if you're open two-thirty to three-thirty on Wednesday, you know, come on up, check it out, because I know Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Gahan have put a lot of work into this, so it'd be great if you could come up and just walk through and see how it's going. All right. The next thing I have is World Classroom, and I think Gabby has a speaker for us. So, years ago, I'll be participating with Close Up, and many of you probably are familiar, maybe you yourself went on that trip. The last number of years with Close Up, we noticed a couple of things, one, it was getting very, very pricey, um, and the expectation of the person that traveled with them was increasing. I know on Wednesday was Capitol Hill Day, and they, um, they would take you to Capitol Hill, but then it was up to the sponsor to kind of lead you around Capitol Hill. Well, if your sponsor didn't know a lot about Capitol Hill, it was, it was a struggle, and then Friday was a free day, again, your sponsor had to take you out and kind of initiate the day. Um, again, Ken Straff and Kyle Meyer had been there a number of times and did a really nice job, but there were just some things with Close Up, we were, we were looking maybe to make a change. Well, then COVID hit, and we just stopped traveling. Um, so at the beginning of this, the year, I was approached by a gentleman named Alex from World Classrooms, they also do a Washington DC trip. Um, and with this trip, it's a little different than Close Up, and, uh, was very intrigued by what they had to offer, um, so they came in and kind of did a presentation. Uh, we do have a staff member that would be very interested in traveling with our group, um, it is a summer travel, uh, Close Up was during the school year, this is in the summer. But it, it really does sound like a, a nice opportunity for North Bend Central, so Alex has agreed to join us via Zoom to kind of share a little bit about, um, World Classrooms and what they have to offer.
Yep, can you guys hear?
Yes, we can, thanks, Alex.
Thank you, uh, yeah, so first, I, it's a beautiful thing, technology, I can actually tune into the board meeting, and if I heard correctly, you're having a problem with too many trophies over in North Bend.
Yes, yes.
You guys are winning too many championships, that's a great thing, uh, to have going on, I think that's pretty cool. But I, I'm grateful to be talking to you today, I wish I was there in person, kind of got double booked, but I'm glad I get the opportunity to at least, um, kind of tell you about what we do. Uh, specifically, we do trips to Washington DC, so can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, cool, so, um, as of today, we're looking at a trip to, to DC, specifically June twenty-seventh through the thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Um, we structure these things out usually on a two-year rotation, uh, it's for a couple different reasons. Uh, one, we want to keep the grades consistent, so we're looking at inviting the seventh and eighth grade, uh, and probably pretty similar to what a Close Up did, uh, in terms of grades that are invited, and when they actually go, so the seventh and eighth grade will be invited, uh, now, they'll be a little older when they go on the actual tour. So, the seventh grade would be ninth grade, and the eighth grade would be tenth grade when they actually touched out in DC.
Do you have his number? Or do you have his email? Just have a message.
Are any other schools in the area doing, utilizing them?
Um, I talked to Ivanka, um, they, they utilize them, and they've been using them for years. It was a new principal that I talked to, um, the gentleman that was there, I'd known from, he was around the area earlier. But the, the gal that I talked to said that they, it's kind of like old hat, you know, they just went, they went this last summer, she said they actually have their organizational meeting next month for the next go-around. Um, but, you know, they, they really enjoy it, it's, um, she actually said they don't, they really don't do any fundraising for it. Um, their fundraising mechanism with World Classroom is they, they send you a letter, and you send a letter out to your family asking for, like, sponsorships. And so that's how they fundraise, and then the rest is just out of pocket. Uh, we would probably use the same format that we did for Close Up, we would create a World Classroom group, or a travel group, and they would be able to do concession stands and things like that. And then on a two-year rotation, uh, hopefully they could build some funds, so it wouldn't be totally out of pocket, yeah. What I like about the World Classroom is that it's a summer travel, that, that's very intriguing, obviously, I know, uh, with Close Up, some, sometimes we lost kids because they couldn't travel during those dates, uh, because it could conflict with state basketball, or it could conflict, right now, where we would normally travel is our Skills USA weekend. So, the summer travel leaves a little more flexibility. And I know that they, they travel a lot with, uh, like they said, they start with seventh and eighth graders to build up their funds, so they're ready to go when they're freshmen and sophomores. Um, our seniors and juniors haven't had an opportunity to go anywhere, so I would, at least the first go-around, would like to open it up to as many kids as possible, uh, so they would have the opportunity to travel. And they do have fifteen, uh, I don't say a fifteen kid minimum, but at fifteen, uh, paid participants, then your sponsor is a hundred percent paid for. Close Up was a lot larger margin, you had to have more kids participating to have your sponsor. You had to have more kids participating to have your sponsors' flight and all of that kind of. So for, from a forward perspective, there should be very little out of pocket. Because instead of putting them on the negotiated or the extra duty salary, their, their fee or their payment is the trip. And I've talked to Mrs. Soffeldt, the one that has inquired more about it. She's very well aware that that's, that's how it works. We don't, we don't, it's on extra duty. It is an extra duty, but your payment is the travel. And I do know with World Classroom, there is another option also. It's the DC trip and then for once they get older, they do a DC and then two days in New York and they go see a show. So we could always expand on this too. Mrs. Soffeldt has also looked at a couple of other travel companies. This is one that she just felt, I guess, more comfortable with. So it's just something we're looking at. Would like your permission to proceed and maybe have a meeting next month just to see if we have, if we have interest. I know I've had some parents ask me. But just to put it out there that we are looking at for a trip in twenty twenty-five to see if we, we have enough interest to proceed and go further.
Probably something negotiations to make sure it gets on the negotiated agreement. There's no cost, but just so you stipulate that. So when that rolls around next year, if we do decide to go forward, then that probably would have to be included in the negotiating agreement. Even though it's not a payment or stipend as such. It's just kind of coming back to tell us more.
Well, I sent him an email to see if, if I just lost him.
So commercials in the account too, there's a time limit for the session.
So you need our approval today or what do you, what's needed from us?
I don't know. I don't know if it's just informational at this time or that we're looking at it.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, just to see if we have enough.
See what the answer is and then eventually, you know.
We can get a consensus of, yeah.
It'd have to be.
Look at it.
Yeah.
Anybody opposed to or looking at an order?
No, I think it's a great thing.
And then the last thing I have is just kind of our, our plan for next Monday, which is in-service day. We'll actually start the day, we have a district meeting at the elementary school at eight thirty. And then we'll come back here to the high school and our core teachers are going to be looking at their winter NSGAS growth scores. We took the NSGAS growth right before Christmas break in some classes and then right after Christmas break in a couple of others. So we're going to come back and see how, what our growth look like from fall to winter. So we can make some modifications that are needed because the final is in the spring. We want our best scores to be in the spring. So we want to make sure that we cover any gaps that we're missing before the spring testing. Our CTE teachers are going to be looking at the Perkins Revision Grant. Now Perkins is very complex and confusing. So we're working on the Perkins Grant for the Family Consumer Science Classroom. But also every year where we consort money with the ESU too. And to be eligible for those monies, we have to complete some documentation. And that just shows what courses we have to offer, what, how we've modified those courses and maybe our future wants for those courses. We have to complete some documentation, submit that to the service unit and then put it, upload it to the state. So it'll take us, every two years we have to do this. So it'll be about two or three hours working with the CTE teachers to make sure that documentation is complete. So we're eligible for the funds for that Perkins money. That would be eligible, I believe, March fifteenth is when that opens for us to look at. And then we'll have school improvement in the afternoon. In our school improvement, it's Mrs. Beaver, Mrs. Carnants, Randy Mimick and Aaron Sturrock will be working on our plan for our April visit. We just have a few more things that we have to iron out before we bring the rest of the staff together to get everything ready for April. And then at lunch, our fun force is going to do a potluck. I've kind of looked at the, the food that is going to be brought and I'm going to have to run a lot. Because we're supposed to bring your favorite foods. So everybody went in there and put their favorite foods and then we're going to have a big potluck as a staff. Just to get some camaraderie and just some time to spend together. That is our day plan for the night.
Do you expect to know the exact numbers, but just thinking about this World Classroom and civics? Has there, has there been many kids sign up, put their name in for girls and boys, they, other's applications?
Yep, actually this year we put it on Facebook and we had a more than, in years past, we've had to go to kids and ask them to apply. This year we've actually, the junior class is very active. So we have, I think, two or three kiddos that have shown interest, both boys and girls, so that's good.
Good.
Yep.
Since you brought up the whole macro, aren't we on progress there?
Yeah. I think right now we're just. Yeah, so we've had, we've had a couple, I don't say architects, but we had a design lady come out and she helped kind of look at the room and kind of what would fit best. Mrs. Nelson, Mrs. Wright and I have been in there a number of times and we're trying to find a nice blend between a culinary kitchen and a kitchen that also fits our middle schoolers. Because we're, the culinary kitchen is going to, those are the kids that know what they're doing and they're, they're ready for that next step. But we also have sixth and eighth graders that go to that room that really, some of them have, their cooking skills are, they just don't have a lot. I mean, they're still learning, we call it knife skills, but that's one of the first things they learn is just how to even cut properly. So we're trying to find a nice blend of how we can make this kitchen available for both our middle schoolers and our high schoolers and our kids that are actually going to go to the workforce with us. So we had this gal out that helped us with the design. And I think we're looking at somewhat like a two culinary kitchen idea with some workspace in the middle. The dollar amount, we've got a couple of different proposals and quotes for that, but we're going to put that all in that grant that we're writing. And then Mr. Wright was also, he came in and we talked about like electricity and, you know, might get some gas lines moved and then what that would all look like. But yeah, so we're in the process of working on that. March fifteenth is our deadline for that grant. And then we'll know, I think July one is, if we know if we can actually get the grant. Yep, so it's, it's still in the process.
It's going to be tough to make it happen next year.
It depends on, it depends on what we all want done.
Well, July one, you got about a month and a half. But are we, are we restricting ourselves to getting grant funds to do this?
Do we have to be dependent on the grant or?
That's on each of us.
Well, I thought we were kind of without the grant.
If we get it, it's a bonus, right? I mean, we can't work that way.
Yeah.
That's not.
So I think we just need to forge ahead and just plan on getting it done over the summer. And then if we get the grants, what be? If we don't, well, we try. I mean, I, I mean, isn't that what makes it all sense?
Yeah.
That area is, I don't think, I don't want to wait another year. That's pretty.
Double check the grants and just make sure that that's the way that it functions. I don't want to throw something in there.
I like that. I, I just, just go for it. We have to wipe the bowl.
We have to wipe the bowl.
I know.
Let's see what we're going to do.
Yeah.
Need a motion. Not today. I'll bring it next month.
We have some numbers today.
Yeah, we got numbers.
Yeah, I have equipment numbers. I, if you're going to look at flooring and things like that, I would.
Flooring is probably the worst.
I know, I, that's why I said that. We probably need to have somebody come out and look at what that would take and if there would be any abatement or anything like that.
It's going to get them.
Cause most of the stuff in the grant that we're writing is, is, it has to be mobile. So like your stoves, your front tables. If it's affixed to the wall like our hood, that will not be covered in the grant.
Except, but that actually makes it easier with the flooring because you don't have to worry about ion space and those sorts of things. You just make a floor and then you can put your equipment. Except that's going to be a decision of the material that you make, choose for the flooring and whether will ceramic work or are there other choices?
Yep, I'll bring that, I'll get the information to you numbers wise and then I'll have that on the board speaking.
They did send us another Zoom link, but I think we're, we're probably good. I'll let her know.
Mrs. Beaver.
Yeah.
Did you have the presentation, did you email us or?
I'll, I'll.
Sure.
So the first thing I put down is that we've been doing our data digs. Just like Mrs. Peterson said, our winter NSGAS data has come in and other benchmark data with MAP and FastBridge, which is foundational reading skills for our younger students. So as grade level teams, we've spent quite a bit of time over the last few weeks analyzing that data and then making decisions about how to adjust instruction. And like Mrs. Peterson said, we're getting towards the end of the year. So we're making that last big push for what we can make changes as far as adults delivering instruction to help kids succeed and reach grade level standards. Then our reading and science curriculum do a nice job of going hand in hand and allow for some cross-curricular connections. And Moral Hall has some really fabulous kits that have a science focus that allow us to do that. So several grade levels wrote foundation grants, NBC Foundation grants to help cover the cost of the kits and have been doing some exploring with that. So a lot of hands-on learning that provides some connections with multiple curricular areas, which is always nice. And then at parent teacher conferences, we wrap those up. We're very fortunate to have strong parent support in this district. We had a great turnout with families coming to talk with teachers. And I just really wanted to highlight Ms. Morgan. She does a really nice job of finding high school students to volunteer their time in the evening on parent teacher conference nights to watch little kids so that parents, both parents can attend conferences and there's someone there to watch their kiddos. So that's not an easy task and our high schoolers are really busy. So when they're willing to volunteer and give up their evening to come watch little children at school, that's like huge kudos to our kids. We have good kids.
Is there, do you do something for them or can we do something for those kids to volunteer?
We probably should. I know that a couple of the kiddos came, they brought their own pizza and I thought, shoot, we should have brought your pizza. That would be something nice to do.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah, just to provide their meal.
Yeah. I just hate to look at, like we're cheap. Is it National Society Kids or not?
Yeah. Would be nice with.
They're supposed to volunteer.
Yeah.
Volunteer ours required, like NHS and those like that.
Yep.
But still.
It's still like.
Pizza.
Pizza would be easy.
Yeah, I've brought them some snacks, but they already have their own pizza.
So you picked smart kids.
They, they are smart kids. Yeah, really good kids.
And what about what we saw from Mrs. Dorsey? Is that something we should be exploring to get for the other kindergarten class?
Um, I think so. So the goal with ESU was just to kind of get some feelers out there. So like Mrs. Dorsey said, the kits are available for checkout. But it kind of takes one person like figuring out how it works and how it can be used. And then kind of word of mouth spreads as it goes. I know fifth grade teachers met today because the robots that fifth graders are using are very complex. I don't quite understand it. But they were working on building it and figuring out how to code it so that when they bring it to the kids in the classroom, it's seamless. They don't have to figure it out while they're providing that instruction. So I think that's something that we can look into. But again, it's kind of teachers sharing with other teachers to build excitement. So we don't want to purchase something and then it just sits there.
So, so does this fit in? Or is this on top of the curriculum that's already been, you know? I mean, we have, we have a plan. This is what we're going to teach, what we have to teach. Does this fit in with that or is this on top?
With the beatbox, with the Roblox? It would be on top of what we already have going. Now, like Mrs. Dorsey, she finds a way to build that into what is already taking place, which, I mean, really just like any type of cross-curricular connection. That's what you want to see. You just want to make it part of the natural learning environment. Fifth grade teachers do a great job of that too. Several years ago, there were some type of robots that someone who is no longer here had, I don't know who it would have been. I, we got the robots from the high school.
From Mrs. Miller? Well, she had some.
It was right.
They're like one time.
The spheres.
Yeah, it's the Ozobots and the fifth graders love them. And it's kind of like an easy type of coding that they do. But the fifth grade teachers found a way to incorporate their coding into their, I survived stories that go along with their performance task at the end of module two in reading. And their robot has to survive the story that they've written with their diorama that they built. I mean, they, our teachers are super creative and our kids do really cool things. So even though it's something extra that's on top of what they're already doing, they do a nice job of finding ways to make it connect.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no end to the good ideas of what we should be teaching, right? I mean, we go in many different directions, but it opens them that we only have so many hours in the day. Yeah, it's great that they're figuring out how to, how to go that in.
With those fifth graders, does it make sense if we have looked into the high schoolers helping? Like the STEM guy, you know, the ones that have done robotics and, you know, I don't know. They would be interested or it'd be a good project for them to be helping little kids.
Yeah, I think that would be.
As complicated as it sounds like.
Yeah, it was really complicated. I walked in today and I was like, woo.
They, they could probably jump right in and know, yeah, know exactly what to do.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Any other questions for Ted? Thank you. Thank you, Renee. So activities for director report. I can go with this. So the winter season's getting ready to come to a close here. Got sub-district girls basketball coming up. We're going on right now and tomorrow for our girls and then sub-district boys will be next week. Bowling has come to an end, both unified and bowling, NSA bowling. Had a couple of finalists, you know, at the district meet. Mr. Nelson, you know, the coach last year, he's going to be coaching bowling. And so he's coached a lot of different things as I understand over the years. So we're happy that the kids were able to have him be their coach. As John wrote in there, we'd like to thank him for all he's done for our kids in the coaching aspect over the years. Wrestling, district wrestling was this last weekend for both boys and girls. The weekend before, the girls had sub-district wrestling and both the girls competed harder, weren't, weren't even qualified for state. We had a couple of boys that are qualified for state. So appreciate all the work, all the wrestlers put in this year and the coaches. So like I said, a couple of guys going here OMA this week. Basketball's coming down to it. The girls got third at East Tusker, so that was awesome. Tough competition as always. They're hosting this week and the boys are champions, or the championship in the East Tusker. And the boys sub-districts should come out Thursday, I think. We'll see where they, that puts us, but we have a fourteen bracket that'll come out and we'll see. Not going to commit to anything yet until it's officially released by NSA, so. The dance squad had their trip to Florida. And you can see their coach Mimick showed, shared with Mr. Bear some of their experience. Had a wonderful time in Nationals. They performed the high kick routine and a jazz routine. They placed eleventh in jazz and with the top eight making it to the finals. The caliber of teams at Nationals is impressive. We were able to reflect on how far we've come as a team and set new goals for our team to continue to improve with hopes of being able to build again in the future. Here in our stadium, we had team bonding, visited different Disney parks and celebrated with teams from all over the United States and other countries. It was an expensive experience the team will never forget. We'd like to extend another thank you to the family, friends and businesses that helped raise the money to the team. Mr. Bear wanted to thank Mrs. Heather Corona for jumping in. Has the dance and cheer teams were gone to help with, or excuse me, the dance team was gone to help with the cheer squad going to games. So it's nice of her. Talked a little about shot clocks, which I know we'll talk about here shortly. But the Daktronics, we'll talk about here a little bit, is a system that we use currently for our scoreboard. So that's what we like to stick with. But the official role for the NSA, I think, is coming there this month, maybe.
I think so.
So, but essentially it's, it's a done deal. Mr. Wright is working on some things on the track to get those corrected, including some exchange zones that need to be cleaned up with their paint. Some pits that need to be cleaned, cleared of debris and kind of picks up the areas that retain the sand.
Our track is correctly measured, isn't it?
I would hope the track is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't ran it for a while, but it should be.
Been waiting too long to buy a runner.
Your shoes are going out.
Gator or something.
But no, there was some scuffs, I think, and some different things from the windstorm that blew some hurdles around maybe here in the past. So last year or so, we'll get those fixed and like I said, touch up some of those pits so they're in good shape, ready for competition. Track will be starting here in a few weeks for practice. Track will be started here in a few weeks for practice perfectly. That was it.
So we do have new mats coming, is that correct? Do we, we want new mats?
Yeah, we'll be here.
I don't think they're here yet. Yeah, we, they're ordered.
All righty. Go to business items, approve the purchase of a sound board for using in gym natorium.
Yes.
Who came up with that name? It's awesome.
That came from the quote, the person that, and so called it a gym natorium. So that combination gym natorium, yes, very nice. So this would allow us to put the control panel, the soundboard at the, across from the stage itself on the far side, the east side of the gym. Set up a little area there, we can all have it sectioned off and essentially the cord is plugged into a wall that's right there. So no one should be walking behind there at all. And the soundboard could use updating, updating anyway. But doing it this way will allow us to stay out of the way of people, not having tripping hazards. And it's also, you know, we can move things around, reconfigure, but still use it if, if we did something to make it more of an auditory, auditory feel than that space. So, or, or another space that can still be used. Again, it's a fair amount, nine thousand eight twenty-five. But as I said, they're cheaper than any type of philosophy to remember and will bill due to tripping.
Could we come out okay on that other one?
I'm not for sure. I didn't, he never followed up on with if we had any more. I know there was no surgeries or anything needed. It was.
It's not a problem financing this. We've got the money covered.
Yeah.
Okay. That's why, because there's a lot of stuff on here, this, this cost and this, and it wasn't already, anything we talked about that was on our budget. You know, we had enough flexibility in the budget that we could cover this with an actual.
Yeah, okay, good. That's a lot of appreciation.
So, so this is for new board and then some new wiring, rewiring so that it's overhead or?
Yeah.
It doesn't change the quality of our sound or anything, it's just control.
Control, yeah. The sound will still be, be good. It might even be a little bit better, I would say.
Better would be good.
I can't remember who. Yeah, I was, who had done some other projects with.
Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll listen to it.
Andy, I need a second.
Second.
Second, by Nick. It'll be Bob.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin.
Yes.
Francis. All right. Our hands are pretty much tied on this one because NSA approved it already, you're willing in April.
And again, the quote that's attached is from Crowe Trac. They're the kind of the DAC supplier installer in our area. And that's what we have for our regular scoreboards. I'd hate to try and use a different system and make the two communicate together because I imagine I, I foresee issues trying to do something like that. The proposal is in the new gym, the main gym, to have, they'd be mounted just above the backboards to understand it. But it would include the game time and then the shot clock time, both. And then the old gym, it would say mount, but it would just be the shot clock time. And then another option or add addition that we have in the old gym is to have the red buzzer lights on the backboards just so if that were to sound, you know, the officials could see when the shot clock expires. So.
Both gyms would have the red lights or one or what?
The new gym already has them. Yep, that would also put them on the table.
Is this installed?
Yes.
Does, do we need an additional person to move the game to run it?
I think there is, I think there is an additional table person that would have to do that, I guess. That's the thing, this is, as Doug mentioned, everybody's going to have to do it. So the sooner we can get this done and scheduled, the better.
So is that a labor right?
Failure. If there may be.
The last item, there's that labor or what? They've already used them in classes.
American living sign. I believe so, yeah. I think that's who was out here in the installation, as far as getting up on the. Mounted correctly.
There's still any brackets, is it? The mounting brackets?
They're a bit little.
Are we sure that this includes installation?
That's what I was saying. I think that last part is.
It looks like it on that list.
Doesn't say labor and installation.
Which just says items needed to order is the same as the subtotal, like sixteen nine ninety-eight. And then that's the total as well, but there, I don't see anything as far as installation and. But what's a forty-two hundred bucks for otherwise? Where I, we said.
Mary bottom, last line item.
Yeah, according to John, this is for everything, installation and everything.
Okay, maybe I have.
Well, it must not be a mounting bracket, so. Says it does not supply mounting brackets. Whatever that's. Suppose those are custom.
Maybe they don't need them, it's just, I don't know. I'm assuming they're putting that clock on the top or behind the backboard.
Yeah, I've seen some other gyms, I've seen them that have them, it, there's that main post that comes down that supports the board. Mounts to that, hops to the side.
So, motion to approve this or more questions answered, more conversation?
What we could do is approve for this amount and I can double check with John installation, but I'm pretty sure that's what the, that last amount is for there. Make a motion to approve the shot clock purchases.
A second. And Nick.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin.
Yes.
Francis.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Prove, open our option.
So this is the resolution that we need to approve each year from back in October. The proof, that's, by the end of October, you have to approve closing of any programs due to restrictions on staff, the staffing, basically. What this is doing is setting a specific number for those grade levels. And so this is the same numbers, I kept them the same as previous year. Updated the year, but also added because of the new, for those students that have an IEP and want to option in, we have to, we can't just say no. We have to take each one of those individually and examine them and, and then if we have restrictions based off of numbers, then we can deny those applications. And then also added that if we do reject an application, the process will use what's included in that rejection notice.
So the numbers we're using are thirty-seven students in kindergarten. And thirty-seven students total in any grade.
One through five.
And then more than forty in grade, grade six through twelve. Special home.
So what are our current enrollments in our high school classes?
Oh, I'd have to, I mean, they're all.
Yeah, it's kind of a mixture, like our junior classes fairly small, they're about forty-two, but our freshmen is fairly large. They're about fifty, so it's kind of a.
So if somebody wanted to come in as a freshman at fifty, we'd have to turn it down.
Unless they're.
A resident.
Unless they're a staff member or if they've already got a sibling that's in.
Right.
For at least two years. We had a nice flow chart from KSB Law that illustrates how to answer all option questions and everything, so. It's by the process if you.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to talk about here too, our discussion for the work session. This might be one of those philosophical things, too, that we need to talk about. Is what we do with the option enrollment. I know Cedar Bloss's got a blog, you know, with their, with their option enrollment, like they have that space and stuff. It's probably safer school, quite honestly. You know, but we need to maybe talk about, you know, what, what we want to be moving forward. You know, as far as do we want to continue to be open door policy? I think more, more kids is good, you know, not to the point where you have to hire staff or have to build buildings. It just, because it generates more revenue, you know, but it also generates more costs to, to certainly spend, not a huge cost, but, you know, so.
Okay. Are, I mean, are we, are we turning, are we turning people away? Like the last five years?
Yeah, there have been, some of them have been rejected, yeah.
So do you have enough special education people to take care of thirty kids, K through five?
Yeah, that's why we have to look at it case by case because like if a child wanted to option in and maybe they had an articulation goal, so it's just speech. That's something that's typically fairly easy to serve versus a child that had maybe a more comprehensive needs. So that would kind of affect that decision of, you know, we might not be able to accommodate that child's needs and be able to meet their goals with the staffing that we do have.
That's why I was just wondering, if we put that number out there, do we have to, are we good with that?
Yeah.
So we need a motion to accept this resolution?
Yeah, then we can, so we have, Mrs. Will Muller has, is compiling a list, she's given the option paperwork for next year already, so. By March fifteenth, we gotta be able to tell those people, you know, we did it right.
Just, do we have any high school grades open that present time?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe we, we do have a middle school grade that would be open.
No grade schools open then either?
A middle school, we have a middle school class that's open.
Okay. So need a motion to accept this resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Still moved. I'll second by Francis. Nick.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
Motion carried. Transportation committee recommendations.
So the committee met on the twenty-fourth of January. We met with Roy in attendance as well, I think he'd be there. He had a sheet which I had attached here, basically the details are attire fleet, mileage, year, all those types of things. The recommendation from Al is to get rid of bus number eleven. It's the oldest one we have now currently and it's just, there's some things. He feels like probably by next year, we'll not allow it to be used anymore. And so the committee decided that we should replace that one along with the oldest full-size van, the Suburban. Which the Suburban doesn't have a ton of miles on it, you know, compared to some of the other ones, but it does get used quite often, so. Maybe get it traded out at some point, get a little bit more money, that might be. That's kind of why we talked, I think, to look at replacing that. But our plan.
And it was Roy kind of talking to three-year.
Right. Take kind of a, three years on when you're off as far as purchasing, you know, a bus. One every year for three years, take a year off and then another three buses, year off, another three, year off.
It would, it would put us then that our oldest bus would only ever be eleven years old?
Yeah, number twelve, that, that whole process would be twelve years essentially, so. Then you could get through, you know, your newer ones would be active activity and then as they kind of get pushed down, then they would turn into round buses. So that way we could get a fuller life out of them. And then he also talked about rotating those round buses, so it's not like the same buses go on the same routes, so. Even out the mileage that way and then maybe a little wear and tear, but.
It would be. The thing I note, we have a hallmark, it's fifty-nine passenger, can't we buy a sixty-five passenger on the COVID bus?
I think it's eleven, is that correct? A sixty-five passenger would be eleven.
Eleven is seventy-two. I thought we did buy one, but I could be wrong. I thought we, when they had the COVID, there was extra money if you got a bigger bus.
I don't know.
What are the warranties on buses? Did we get extended warranties on?
I don't know, I'd have to look and see on that last one, maybe what it was.
But when you said use the good buses for activities, I don't know, I guess, I was thinking. Put as many miles on them underneath the warranty versus not using, saving it.
Yeah, but those are the hardest miles, the route miles.
Right, so underneath warranty.
Well, the warranty's up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's hardest on lobby. Your body's not going to necessarily do anything while it's under warranty. I'm not saying you're wrong, but, I mean, the, the issues are always with the bodies when they age out.
But.
This does make some sense to run them up to the warranty mileage, you know, and as quick, you know, within the, within that period, period of time to see if something does go wrong. Because if you keep taking it easy on it to start with, and then you get past that warranty date, mileage, whatever, and then something goes wrong, then, then we'll wind up paying the bill on that.
So.
You're just covered under more miles.
Yeah. Yeah.
But once you put, yeah.
It's a philosophical thing.
Right.
You know, how you.
You put a brand new one on a route, I mean, you're never going to probably put that on activities then.
Well, and that's kind of the deal, too, is what kind of a bus do you want to drive into someplace else? You know, do you want to look, want it to look like it's a, you know, good bus or like it's been rode hard, put up wet, you know, kind of thing, too. So again, maybe, maybe that's something we need to talk about at our, at our workshop, is that, that philosophy as well, because it's a philosophical discussion. You know, as far as dollars and cents and what, some of it is the image you want to portray when you put those vehicles on the road, too, you know. One thing I know, I thought we talked about at the meeting, too, is maybe getting the, you know, Al wants to retire the international bus, but Al's not boss.
Yeah.
We were supposed to come up with a price on what the, because it was mainly just the door that doesn't function.
Yeah.
Come up with a price on what the door would actually cost to get repaired and not to keep it around as a spare. Kind of a old junky thing.
Was it also the, what the stuff?
Mr. Nelson was taking it off around.
Yeah, there was something with the little noise.
Yeah.
Like the, the frame to body.
But I just thought it would still be nice to have that information before we say, yeah, we're going to retire it for sure, or it's going to go sit out there and we're going to auction it off.
Okay.
If they need more trucks.
Get a second opinion.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Roy about that.
Just wouldn't like the info.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When the other thing we did talk about too was, we, all the buses out there except this one are bluebirds too. You know, that was one of the things, is consistency in the control panels and stuff. I know when I, when I. Three.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, sorry. But the, uh, I drove for football, wrestling, and track, and never rode the same bus. Well, twice, but on alternate trips and stuff. It was a pain in the drain trying to get in there, trying to run a bus when you didn't know what the control panels like, because they were all different.
Yeah.
Well, that does put a limitation on your competition for bids if you're gonna go back and get the same kind of bus again. You know, which is one of the things you always, you, you kind of need to have. Is that a requirement? If we spend more than a certain amount of money, then we have to have more bids, don't we?
Um, I'll have to check on transportation. I'm not sure on that. Like for building, yeah.
Yeah.
Construction type projects.
Okay, yeah, maybe that's what I was thinking of, but. I, I, it would have been great if we would have had the same control panels when I was driving, because it was always.
Yeah, I know the drivers like that.
Yeah.
I've heard that a number of.
I'm sure they change with years of grades and stuff.
Bus driver, are they very much different or are they pretty close to the same?
The one, eleven is definitely very different.
Yeah.
I, it's all up here, but, um, the other ones, it's all right here. It's, it's pretty, if I can figure it out, our professional bus drivers can figure it out.
Pretty close.
Drive during daylight though, right?
Well, I drive activity routes.
Yeah, night?
Yeah, so at night, yeah.
That was, when I always had issues was at night, during day wasn't such a bad.
Yeah, you can find your. As long as you use the same brand, I think you're okay.
I know that's what Roy, our new transportation director, suggested we stick with.
Yeah.
Corey did give me some numbers on new buses he's got coming.
Oh, he did?
And then he's trying, he's giving me some used as well.
Next meeting, we're gonna see those there.
Yeah, I'll share them with you. I just got them from Corey, so I'll, I'll put them in our communication.
Any other questions on what the Transportation Committee's come up with?
So no decisions tonight or anything?
No. No. The one, the one comment I'd make, I would, I would go check out one of those Ford vans.
Yeah.
They got a lot more room in them.
There are some nicer vans than they are.
Ford sell schools vans?
Yeah.
They will now? They used, they use in a, even some districts.
Yeah, no, I've seen, I've seen Ford Dodge as well too, kind of the boxier, you know.
Like the Mercedes-Benz type, that they, they've got more room in them. They're pretty decent.
I mean, everything, do we get comparison quotes for Ford or Chevy for the Suburban also?
I think if we can, I think, yeah.
We talked about other programs over out there, like the National Forest Service, state purchasing. Is, is there anything, or have you had a chance?
I haven't had a chance, yeah, I couldn't have. Yeah, could you talk about that? You know, get maybe a, so they use a vehicle, you know, through a government agency. Be a little cheaper. I don't know if we'll find, it's gonna be on that, like on our Suburban that we, the school that we got that directly.
We don't have any more discussion on that. We'll go to the February work session agenda.
Yeah, I, obviously we'll have, uh, Dr. Bola there to present our final summary of the P A needs assessment. So that'd probably take a lot more focus and time. And then I'd also like to kind of roll that into updating some of our capital improvement plan. And then what should lead to some, a little bit of budget work, so. I did put the option enrollment, put that on there too. You know, all the things, they all kind of tie together maybe a little bit with the option enrollment. Was there anybody else that anything they didn't want to have on the agenda? That is at the library, you know, twenty-first, at seven. Come early because there's a meal.
Should we be there at six-thirty-ish then?
Yeah.
Yep. We'll go to, any other discussion on that? Discuss legislative bills affecting schools, that, that would be interesting.
Uh, we have a lot of bills. If you've been following that, I think, oh, was it, that was fourteen-hundred maybe total we have carryover and new bills proposed. Uh, I believe they're still right now discussing some of the bills in committee. But those will start, some have already started to come out of committee. But these are just some ones to pay attention to. There, there are more. Uh, there'll be nineteen eighty-six by Senator Linnahan, changes to the Teach Nebraska Today Act, which I think Senator Walz had approved last year. But this change or this bill, this version of it, would grant full-time teachers who've taught Nebraska five years or less, five thousand dollars per year for up to five years, as long as their income does not exceed the fifty-five thousand. So that could be a good thing for, uh, new teachers coming out. There'll be ten thirty-four by Senator Lippicott, prohibit schools from punishing employees for engaging in religious expression. So that allows staff on their own time, or when they're not engaged with students, basically, to have their own, express their own religion in schools. I'm not necessarily gonna say what's, which of these are good or bad. You can go to the NASB, I think I've shared that link with you, and look up these bills, and they kind of take a stance on that in C S A as well. Generally, they all are kind of in line with one another. With that one, I do see, I think, maybe you saw, I don't know if it was in Iowa, but there was a, I think it was a religious leader for church. I don't know what it's called, but Church of Saint, I'm not sure what the name is, but. I guess technically that could be a religion that's also expressed in a school too. If that were the, indeed the case, I don't think you can select which religions are okay in church. There'll be ten sixty-three from Senator Merman, special building fund vote. This is one that most groups are against. It would require our vote of the people to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars paid out of your special building. For a lot of projects, it wouldn't take very long to get above that, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so. Uh, thirteen ninety-eight from, again, Senator Merman, special education reimbursement. This will be for option students who, who are on I E P. The first year they're in their option district, they would get a hundred percent reimbursement from the state, and then twenty percent each year after that. Uh, another one, there'll be thirteen ninety-nine, parent involvement bill. This one, I believe Senator Merman also proposed last year, but this time it's slightly, they toned it down a little bit. But basically would create more transparency for parents' school operations. Parents attending class, being able to review all curriculum and assessments, review all library books, reviewing the surveys, parents completing them, and their child results are parts of this bill. The hang up there, some people are saying is curriculum, for instance, especially assessments. You know, those are, a lot of those are things you pay for, that we have to pay for as part of curriculum, or a series, book series purchase. And so to be able just to, you can't really just put that online for everyone to see, this purchase material. And so there could be some hangups there on getting that information to parents. Uh, L B, L Bs fourteen oh two and fourteen oh three by Senator Linnahan. Essentially, these are the Opportunity Scholarship Act, round two. They basically work hand in hand to create that, again, the only difference is there's no, no mention of tax credit in there. So the funds would just come from the state budget, I guess. I think this is probably being, these are being proposed in case seven fifty-three is revoked in November. The last one, Senator Linnahan, the Property Tax Growth Limitation Act. Uh, this kind of is like, you know, for when we set our budget this year, our, we were living, and we decided to stay under that three percent cap. Other schools decided to, and their boards were to go over it. And some did go over it and, and took that money, some voted to go over it but didn't take the money. This essentially would not have that as an option, it'd just be three percent unless you ever voted the people to exceed.
Not just a hearing, you'd actually. It's like this year, all you had to do is have a hearing and then tell me you're going over it, right?
Right. No, yeah, you'd have to have a vote of the people, so you'd have to coordinate it. And then there, there's other bills that say you can only have votes, such as those when, it can't be a special election. It has to be the very primary or a general election. So you'd have to set your budget somehow. And then in November, I guess, have a vote of the people to see if you could exceed.
Only be able to do it every two years then too, because of elections, like. Well, what, what does a special election cost? You do it by, you can do it by mail, by grant?
I've never done one. I'm not sure about.
I didn't know if they'd come up in conversation, but that's always kind of the deal. You spoke, you give the people, but they don't throw that cost in there because that becomes your cost.
Well, I think that, that one, and I didn't put it on here, but the thought is if you have a vote on a bond or, or something like this, you'll get a better turnout, more people would.
During a regular election.
Right. But what I've heard is people who have special or mail-in elections, for, let's say, a school one, actually the turnout is better that way than it is for a general.
Don't have to fill the polls, I mean, it makes sense to me that, you know, by mail would get a better response.
Right.
But, and then if you gotta wait for two years.
Right.
I mean, that just.
Yeah, a lot of hand time, really.
Is it fourteen oh two or fourteen oh three was gonna add a fifteen hundred dollar credit to, to private schools for their students, right? That was part of that, one of those were.
Yeah.
Just like we get fifteen hundred a kid, we're gonna push that to the private school sector then.
Kind of like a savings account for students.
Any other questions on the bills? If anybody wants to go to the NERC's legislative day, it is March two.
That's Tuesday, I believe.
Yeah. Nineteenth through the twentieth.
Twenty.
Twentieth.
Yeah, is anyone, I'm gonna go down, but.
All right, personnel, approve the resignation of Mariah Davis, elementary educator. Pretty self-explanatory there. So if you want to make a motion to accept that.
Make a motion to approve the resignation of Mariah Davis.
Second. Motion by Nick, second by Bob. Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
And Nick?
Yes.
Approve the resignation of Linda Hope, middle school, high school, custodian.
Some moved. Si-approve.
Second by Nick. Doug, yes.
Yes.
Justin, Francis.
Yes.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy, motion carried. Approve the hire of Don Buckingham.
Give me a skip.
Middle school cafeteria. What's that?
Skip.
Approve the hire of Katie Tank, elementary parent educator. And she started her release, so I need a motion?
And do we approve?
Bob?
Second.
Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Self, yes. All right, now hire of Don Buckingham, middle school, high school cafeteria worker.
Motion. Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Nick. And Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yep.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Approve the hire of Ali Ahuna, cafeteria worker, middle school, high school.
Some moved.
Francis? Second.
Second.
Justin?
I have a question, is that a man or woman?
Woman.
It's, it's Ali. I, I don't, it's not a name that I recognize at all. Already going, working already?
Yep.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approve the hire of Rachel Cowat, high school science teacher. So somebody want to give us a little background here?
Uh, Rachel will come to us from Crofton, where she started her teaching career. Actually, she student-taught at a conference school here. So I reached out to both her cooperating teacher and the principal there, and they said she was delightful. Um, and that we would be lucky to have her, and also talked to the people at Crofton and said they were sad to see her leave, but we are really excited to have her here. She is gonna teach roughly the same classes she was at Crofton.
She'd be doing physics, chemistry, all friend stuff, or?
Yep, famous, Mr. LaHaffa.
Should I, motion approved?
Yep.
I would move that we approve the hire of Rachel Cowat as the high school science teacher.
Motion by Bob, second.
Second.
Nick?
Yep.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Where's she from originally?
Stewart.
Okay, I see the Stewart up above. I just didn't know if that was Kern or Nate.
Approve the hire of Heather McCrory, middle school special education teacher.
So Heather comes to us from Skyler. Uh, she's been at Skyler for about five years. Before that, uh, she had been at Cedar Bluffs, and I believe she started her career, uh, in Omaha. Um, she actually lives here in the district, um, so is very excited to, to come join the N V C staff. More excited to have her.
So, I'll move that we, uh, hire. Andy makes the motion, I need a second. Justin? And.
What is Fisher's name?
Yeah, I just saw that.
Fisher's is the pink school north of town, if you're going up, was it fifteen, I have it fifteen, yeah. It's that school.
North of the Monastery?
Yep, so she, she's in a six-eight classroom right now, she teaches all those weird things, yeah.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
And then hire of Kelsey Billydall?
Yes, so Kelsey, um, actually student-taught for us. Uh, it was Kelsey Stallbaum at the time. Um, so she student-taught with Dan Nelson, um, and then started her teaching career in Fremont and has been in the Fremont public school system, uh, working in a smaller school setting there. Uh, she actually works with younger grade, uh, younger age students, um, but has been working with the high school teacher also just to get some experience. So we're excited to have Kelsey back in our district. It's, it's great that they student, student-taught here and want to come back, so we're excited to have Kelsey.
And her name was Beagle?
It was Stallbaum, but she student-taught here and now it's Beagle.
Is she married too? Beagle, okay.
Yep.
Motion.
Yes.
Bob, second.
Second.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
We getting a lot of applicants for these positions, three, four, five?
Yeah, better than what I anticipated, yeah, so I was pleased.
Landon Privdow.
Yeah, so Landon Privdow, um, is actually gonna be a first-year teacher. Uh, he is currently student teaching at, in Warford. Um, he is originally from Boone Central, so when he came to do a visit here and interview, wasn't really for sure a lot about North Bend, but as we were walking around, he saw a lot of similarities between Boone Central and North Bend Central because we, we operate a lot the same. We have smaller communities that feed into us. So, uh, we're excited to have Landon. Uh, he's excited to be working with Mr. Wallen next door, and I think he'll be a great fit here in North Bend Central.
So I need a motion.
Some moved.
Bob, second.
Second.
Andy? Doug, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Approve the hire of Melissa Cody, hoopin' elementary teacher. That's just a change of bill, right?
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Make a motion.
Motion by Nick, second. Second by Justin. Justin?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes.
Is anybody gonna, is Wax Museum gonna continue on?
Sorry, Wax Museum?
Good question.
Does Wax Museum gonna continue on? Is she gonna take that, somebody else gonna take that?
That is unknown at this time. Yeah, that'll have to wait till we see. It, it's not part of the curriculum, it's something that she did as part of a foundation grant.
Okay.
So with all these hires, where do we set with? Are we full?
No.
No.
I'm still, uh, with Melissa Cody going back to the grade school, then that opens up her position, so we're in the process of hiring that position, but otherwise, I think.
Advertised applicants?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to give it to you when today that I had, uh, U N L.
Okay.
For that position, and one other one at least is my company. And you want to thank these two ladies for all the work they've done, and filling these positions and all, and with everybody that's helped file, you know, compiling their files, making sure all the information's gathered, and, and here's to forget the contracts. A great process, I think it was, and good people, so.
The one thing, the website's, I think it's pretty cool, you guys watch some career affairs, that stuff's out there. Um, they're doing a good job with the new website, I think, I mean, I look at it about every day, so there's plenty of good stuff going on with it. So now we're gonna go into executive session, so I need a motion. Uh, Justin, second.
Yes.
Andy? Francis, you're first. Do you have a vote on it? Yes.
What'd you say?
You're first, to go into executive session?
Yes, I did say yes once, I'm sorry.
Start it over. Bob?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Doug, yes. Justin? So I'll text Gabby and we can take a bathroom break if you want.